...statements to make right off the bat. So let's just get into a conversation. So any questions or points that you want to make before, please proceed. And I'll do it. I guess we don't have a roving microphone. But can everybody, if everybody will make, in fact, if you wouldn't mind coming as far forward as you can so we can all hear the questions as easily as possible, that would help a lot. And as you emote your questions, please do it in a fair volume as you can. Thank you very much.
Tony had a question.
What were some of the main topics that you covered during your meetings over the conference? I know you've been in there quite a few days. What is the priorities?
The question was in terms of, was about what have been discussed among the committee, the board meeting particularly, I'm sure, during the conference. What are their issues? What are our priorities? There were a number of committees that met in, to be really clear and honest, but not all of the members of all the committees are here at present. So there were some committees that were fully engaged in those kinds of discussions, those committee discussions. The board, however, was here in strength and we had an all-day board meeting yesterday. And in that meeting, I would say that we had a number of issues and David, a number of issues, a number of points, few issues. Let me see if I can dredge out of, out of my almost sleepless mind this morning, a few of them, and David will fill in the blanks, I'm sure. We talked about, we talked about chapters. Chapters are an important part of this organization. I mean, chapters are, chapters are, if not the lifeblood, they're probably the immune system for this organization, spur us on to do the right thing. Chapters Assembly met a couple of nights ago, and I can't really speak to it too much in the way of, there was a presentation made about output from the Chapters Assembly. Let me just say in that regard, Chapters Assembly has gone through a series of changes, fairly strong changes. I think, from what I heard yesterday from Ronnie LaJoy, those changes result in a stronger Chapters Assembly and a stronger network among the chapters. And as you may or may not know, the Chapters Assembly and the network that is represented by that Assembly is an informal connection between the members that are parts of chapters and chapter organizations. And Ronnie, I would advise you, if you wish to say something in this regard, please come forward. I'd be happy to give you the microphone for that. The board is concerned about the welfare of the chapters, the organization, the life of the chapters, in the context of the overall organization. And we have, we have very few, in fact, we have, the organization, National Space Society has bylaws, only one requirement for the continuation, the continual recognition, official recognition of organized chapters. That's a very unstructured report of financial condition once a year. And while that is, I think, not only necessary, but an absolutely minimal requirement, there were only something like 70 chapters out of what we have on the books as 95 or so the past year. Seventy chapters chose to input that. And not all of those chapters, to be really honest, are all that active or hardly active on the scope at all during the year. And I think that's, to me, that is, that's really something to be sorry about. We need to do a lot more as an organization to encourage local, community, and regional chapter activity, not only our members, but of non-members, because many of the chapter members are in fact not members of the National Space Society. And the board is concerned about that, and so we're looking at actions and opportunities to make some change in that regard. So let me just hand over to Ronnie, and he can either correct me or add on to what I've said.
Ronnie wants to set you up there technically.
All right. Thank you. Good morning. There's two things, two approaches we're doing now to strengthen chapters. One is the top-down approach. The Board of Directors, through a motion by Marion Dyson, is revising the chapters. The chapter rules, though it's, they're slightly out of date. There is, there is, as Charlie said, a requirement for chapters to file annually. There is a set of guidelines called chapter rules, and that is, that I haven't read it, and I need to, but that does describe, I would guess, accepted and not acceptable behavior for chapters. There's also a tome called a chapter handbook. That is being tracked down. We have electronic copy. We have hard copy. We're looking for the electronic copy. We will revise that and get that out to chapters. Meanwhile, the bottom-up approach is the Chapters Assembly. And we have rededicated ourselves. We've refocused now, and 90% of our activities will be on chapters helping chapters. We have chapter resources. We have works. We have information sharing. And we've reduced our dues requirement now to zero for the near term, so every chapter can now be a member and can participate. Any questions? Thank you.
What folks, if you want to stay here, you might do the answer. Okay. I'll just talk real quickly about some of the things we spent some time on. I think Tony left the room. I think they had some operational things wanting to work on. We certainly have been spending more time on organizational and institutional strengthening of our society. We need to raise more money. Our appeals that we send out to you on a nearly a bi-monthly basis really just are the foundation for what we want to do. If we want to create really exciting programs and further outreach than we're presently doing, we need to expand the pie, not just continue to bring in the same amount. I'm happy and pleased to be able to report here today that we came up with two new visionary donors here this weekend. They're sitting in about the same room here over in this section, Jay Whitner and Fred Ordway, both became visionary donors. Just really thank you both. But we need to find more donors amongst not only our own base, but to reach out beyond to find some of the aerospace company executives, to find donations that we can get from people who are sympathetic with our vision, whom we haven't yet reached. So we spent some time in the board meeting yesterday, getting a nice presentation from a major donor consultant that we're working with, who's taking chicken feed for pay, but I think will reap great dividends for us down the future. In terms of programs and outreach activities that we're doing, we talked a lot about the Halo project, which is a great success. We're really looking forward to expanding our participation in that. We've got some legal issues and liability problems. I think we can get involved in. We talked at length about the Space Summit. You're all familiar, I'm sure, with the appeal that we sent out for membership support for a space, which had been mentioned by President Clinton back in August of last year, about the time of the discovery of potential life on Mars. You're right. That never came to being. And the National Space Society membership, leadership, and even outside in Washington, there's been quite a bit of discussion about the need for a space summit, and it's been dropped. And so we feel, our members clearly, the results of our appeal, that we need to promote this idea. And we're looking forward to doing one this autumn, in conjunction with the project Chairman of the Executive Committee, Bob Zuberin, came up with, which is some sort of a debate on the relative merits of missions to return and go on to Mars. We think this is something that we can build quite a bit of excitement for. We're going to try to build a one- or two-day conference, an event in Washington, which then eventually, we might be able to take on the road and bring to communities across the country. Bring, have the debate be the focal point, be sort of the event that gets the media interested, and then, oh, by the way, slip in this idea of a space summit, talk about what Americans want to do with their space programs, and in fact, what all humans here on Earth want to do with their space program. We talked at length also about congressional relations, what we're doing in Washington, not only with our abilities and capabilities and staff and with our board in the Washington area, but also what our grassroots throughout the country can do, phone calls, emails, letters to members of Congress and the administration, and in fact, the agency itself. That's just a quick overview. And Charlie, I think, has been taking some notes here. He might have some more.
I guess I have a question.
No? Okay. We'll get to your questions in a second.
Well, unless the question was about what punch they would go to, then let's go.
If that's okay. We'll come in.
Okay. There was, in addition to, I like freedom. In addition to the summit activity that David just talked about, there was an idea which was brought up by Bob Zuberin, which the board discussed, the idea being a National Space Society radio program, national radio program. And the action there is that we're going to, to look at that at the headquarters level with some volunteer support in looking at structurally how that could be done, how it could be financed, how it could be organized, and what kind of timing we might be able to put it in play. And one of our, one of our most active members from our Langley, Virginia, chapter had a great idea, and we're going to be relying upon Florence at the national level and the chapter there to help us think through this and work on that activity. The Policy Committee, a short report was given by our new Policy Committee Chair, Gordon Woodcock, his name I'm sure is familiar to all of you who have been with this organization for any significant period of time. Gordon has taken over the chairmanship of that committee after Dr. Scott Pace had to resign this past year because of the press of other obligations, which, quite frankly, I think was not necessarily a bad thing, because those other obligations were, at least in strong measure, the fact that he's being relied upon by the White House through his employer, the Rand Corporation, to help and consult and input to the White House on matters that we are also interested in. So, but anyway, Gordon gave a short presentation. He is, he's getting up to speed with the Policy Committee's past deliberations and positions, which have been adopted by the National Space Society. Gordon expressed a clear, had a clear expression of his position that he didn't intend going into this capacity to change positions, recommend change, strong change in positions that are already established, certainly without due deliberation by the committee. And those, those kinds of positions, just in general form, we have positions on Moon, Mars. We've got an active campaign still underway for campaign for return to the Moon. We've got petitions out for space, and particularly with emphasis on Mars as well. And those, those are backed up by policy directions. This organization does believe that there are a number of destinations out there, and the Moon and Mars are the most, most clearly defined and the most readily understandable by the public. And Florence is showing me the petition, the petition for space exploration, and that we're still receiving those. And that the Langley chapter is coming up with the idea, is going to be implementing the idea of implementing a junior version of that, of that petition, meaning available for signature by students and expressing in petition form the young people's desire, students' desire to see space opened up for them, who will be the leaders of the next generation and beyond, and who intend to explore, to live and work there. The Policy Committee also, of course, holds, and the National Space Society has adopted their recommendations for a strong and emphatic support of legislated commercial augmentation or of laws, or implementation of laws, to reduce the regulations and make more appropriate to commercial opportunity, commercial investment and development, space activities, space investments in space, and return profits from space. Legislation in that regard is now moving through the House of Representatives, and we hope and expect, and are working towards, seeing that that legislation, commercial space legislation moves into the Senate and goes to conference and is voted into the law this year. So those positions, I think primarily, are being pursued by the Policy Committee, and we will, you'll continue to see information on that, those pursuits in AdAstra and inside NSS.
Well, the email addresses to implement by people sending in to the legislature, you know, let's do it, let's do it. How do we go about that?
Well, Florence, the question is, will there be email addresses or addresses and mechanisms for writing, mailing to members of Congress? Well, mechanisms are in place, and I guess the question means that we just don't have, we haven't fully communicated the opportunities to do that. We have an organization in the family of organizations of the National Space Society, Space Cause, that is a resident organization with mechanisms to make those. But all of us have the opportunity to literally look up in the phone book our, the local offices for our members of Congress, and I certainly would encourage that, because most people think that they have to write or call Washington DC to get to their member of Congress or their senator, or one of their senators, and that's not at all necessarily the case. So we can all, all politics is local, and you can certainly act local and have a national impact in that regard. Yeah.
Do you ever know what the numbers are of the resolutions that are passing that went through the House? I'm just trying to.
The Space Commercialization Resolution. HR, Mark, what is the number?
It was introduced this week. It was already introduced. It's HR, excuse me, House Resolution 1702, the Space Commercialization Bill 1997. The sponsor is Chairman of the Space Sub, I'm sorry, the Science Committee, Sensom Brenner in Wisconsin. It's basically just a rehash of 36, 36 last year?
1953.
1953 last year? No, okay. The Commercialization Bill of the last Congress that was sponsored by Chairman Walker. You will be able to find this off the NSS phone page, also the America Online, Space Exploration Online. Florence, to answer your question, you know, if folks want to send email messages to their members of Congress, you can contact us. We'll give you the email address for the staff, if we have them. Now, in all cases, we don't have email addresses for each and every member of Congress. Some of them have them, some of them don't. And there are services out there on the net that you can, you can find which ones are available, and/or we can do that research for you. It's 170, 1702. There's a question over there that Cliff had, and then we'll come back over this line.
Actually, it's not a question. It's a comment, and we better get it before the subject gets too far away from what you said about fundraising. I'm also a member of the Experimental Aircraft Association, and every year, the EAA raffles off an airplane. Now, that kind of grand prize might not be appropriate for NSS, but I know there is a commercial organization now that's selling rides on water mouths to Obama comment. There are all kinds of things that could be exciting awards or something along that line. The way the EAA does it, in their magazine, they have a panel of 12 water mouth to coupons that you fill out, and they ask you to send in a minimum of $1 donation with each one of those. There is no required donation. You can fill out as many as you want and send them in for free, but the honor system does work pretty well, enough to cover their expenses.
You're sure about that?
Well.
I can't go get away a plane if we're not going to cover.
I understand. Those prizes also could be encouraged to be donated. I mean, there's a number of things that you could get donated from various sources. Not only would such an activity, I believe, raise significant revenue for NSS, which, as you point out, we really need. It would also generate an enthusiasm in the membership and excitement that there are experiences that they can have, too, that it's not just for people who have lots and lots of money.
I'll really talk to you about this in the future.
I would really welcome the opportunity to talk to you about that. The other thing I wanted to mention, when we're talking about a radio show, I think that's great, but I think even better, might be hosting some program on the Science Fiction Channel. I know they run some fact-related programming in addition to their science fiction content. And just having the NSS sponsor that as hosts for the show, I don't know that you'd have to have a financial commitment to do that. They might welcome people to come in and play talking heads for them in that capacity.
You may be familiar with the show Inside Space, which airs on Sci-Fi Channel. Dave Brody, who's the producer, is not only a member, but a friend. And Dave has done a number of sequences on Inside Space, although I know I did a fairly lengthy one about two years ago.
And it was great.
Well, it was fun to do. We continue to pursue that. I'm fairly confident we will do one this fall on the Cassini mission. And the whole issue of the counter protest against Florida Coalition for Peace, Justice, and furry things, that seems to, anything involving space power sources other than chemical repulsion should be put in space. And Dave and I have been talking about doing a segment on that, in which it focuses primarily on NSS's counter protest. Because, of course, there's nothing that gets the media's attention than a counter protest. It's one thing if you're protesting, if you're a counter protest, but protesting all of a sudden you become a very interesting topic. We take some more questions. There was one over on this side. He went away. A gentleman in a Rearmord T-shirt.
As far as to calling the SARS Congressman, Christian Coalition actually has the 800 number that connects you to the Capitol switchboard, that even if you completely disagree with their positions like myself, you can certainly call, use that number to contact your senators or representatives in charge.
Okay. Did you hear that? There's an 800 number that apparently will put you right through to the Capitol. Do you know that number by chance?
Unfortunately, I don't. I, I think if you, if you figure out the right search term, you can probably get it through Altavista or Asian News, but like I said, I think the Christian, I think Christian Coalition is the one operating that, so you can probably check their webpage, but don't quote.
You can also just call the Capitol directly. It's 202-224-1234.
2131.
2131, thank you. 224, 2131.
For a while, the AFL-CIO had the 800 line also, that was 1-800-AFL-CIO.
Did everyone hear that? 1-800-AFL-CIO. Doesn't seem like a number.
Use the DAF button on your phone.
I think the key point is, there's a number of ways for us to contact Congress, through switchboards, through the internet, through mail. We just need to do it. We just need to do it consistently. I'm sure Dr. Wells this morning would acknowledge that, you know, he probably meets a lot of people in his district, because there are quite a few employees, but other members of Congress who don't have aerospace facilities or contractors in their districts don't hear about the topic all that often. So when they do, they pay attention, because, of course, they figure one person contacts them. There's many more that are space supportive, but they're not hearing them. You just need to do it.
Thank you. Just have two points, just to add to the conversation. Michael Gilbrook can elaborate on this. Yesterday, he was talking about the, an example of counter demonstration, the effectiveness of it. It was either for Ulysses or Galileo, they had people protest down watch, and they had about 150 people out there with the science. He took 15 people and did a counter protest or counter demonstration. And because the press was there, and they saw two different protests, they had to cover it equally. And so with 15 people versus 150, they still got halftime. The other point I'd like to make is regarding the Inside Space, base and crew out, both times, March 22nd and May 11th, to our Halo rocket mission. So look for a documentary in the near future. I'm encouraging David, Rain, and Charlie Walker to contact them. Hopefully, because they weren't there, but hopefully they can do some interviews and really promote the NSS mission. We do what we can, but I can't guarantee, I'm not, we have no review rights, so I have no idea what they're going to text and put on. Question from the gentleman here.
Quick comment. One thing we need to be very careful of, if we're going, if you're in opposition or counter, you're speaking of counter protests, one thing we very much need to stress is the compatibility between space exploration and development and the environment. There's something, you know, we, you know, I hear a number of people, I work in a, I work in a medical electronics firm, and we get very much bombarded by animal rights people. And the comment that we get is, the comment that we make is, none of those people have ever been medical patients. But one of the, a thing that we need to, a thing that you need to point out is that a lot of the, you know, the benefits, among them being very much environmental benefits of space exploration, are very, very prominent there.
Sure, your point is very valid, I think. We don't win by trashing their argument. We win by twisting their argument more to our advantage and saying, hey, listen, you know, they have good point about this. Chernobyl, of course, has been more radioactive than anything we're ever going to put up in space. And, you know, I'm from there. Very valid point. Clarissa.
Yeah, I found it not quick, easy, and convenient to find out what NSS policy positions are. At one time, we were listening on AdAstra. If we still do, it's not always the same place, so I don't always see it. And the last few times I went to the NSS webpage, I was in a hurry, so I've never explored it completely. But would it be possible to put our policies, either a synopsis or maybe links to the whole thing or something, on our webpage?
Keep looking. They're there. You have to go a little deeper. You know, the website, of course, is primarily a tool to try to reach out to the public at large. We've tried to make it as user-friendly as possible, and so you want to bring people in and keep them coming. And, you know, clearly, our policy positions are very important, but if we put those up front and center, it might not keep people coming back. So they're there, you have to look for them.
Just the most recent ones, or all of them?
No, I believe we have, Karen might be able to even help me further, as I see our web manager.
There are, there are backgrounders and policy statements for the last couple of years in the alerts section. So if you go to www.nss.org/alerts, you will get to, to that section. So any of our press releases, our position statements, all of that, we're just doing as much as we can now to make sure all of that stuff gets to the web whenever we generate something that's press.
And for those policies which are still being formulated, when NSS members think they might have input to those, is a list of in-progress also available?
Actually, Gordon Woodcock, our Policy Committee Chairman and Vice President. Actually, Gordon Woodcock, our Policy Committee Chairman and Vice President, has taken upon the task of rewriting and revising all of our papers. And in conversation with him yesterday, one of the first things he's going to do is visit the current papers, rewrite, revise, maybe draft new ones when necessary, pass them through the Policy Committee, through the Board, the chapters, probably put them up on the net somewhere so other activists can read them before we put them out as the final products. You know, it's always a work in progress. So we have all of these position papers. Unfortunately, until recently, the Space Station one referred to the Space Station Freedom. So, yeah, that was a little bit dated. So we moved on that one quickly and not only dropped the reference to Space Station Freedom, but included a number of references to commercialization and to international cooperative efforts and so forth to update it. Clearly, there's a lot of work to be done. I think Gordon acknowledges that this will take some time, but since he's in retirement now, he's got time.
He probably has the most of them finished by Labor Day, so we can look for him in the fall to support all campaigns.
That's from Mary Ann Dyson, the Society Secretary. We also have a number of other board members in the room. Bennett Rudledge is here. Who else do we have? We have Fred Mayfor. My eyes aren't as good as they used to be. I can see the current board members in the room. We have some other questions. Karen?
I was just wanting to make a comment on the webpage. I went on the webpage to look at our chapter information, to see if it was updated and so forth. And my real comment has to do with how long it takes to access it. It evidently is one whole great big long list and it takes a really long time to load. And if you're in a state like Texas, which is towards the end of the alphabet, you really have to wait a long time for that whole list to load. I think some thought should be given to segmenting the list so that you can select a section, a state section, and that'll come up rather quickly. Because the general public, I don't think, is going to sit there and wait the time that it's going to take, that it takes for the list to come up right now.
Good point. My understanding, my server sends that really quickly. You know, I, obviously, I can't comment on what kind of system you're using or anything. Jeff Faust keeps our chapters list. Jeff is the editor of Space Views from the Boston chapter. Maybe Jeff can comment.
Yeah, it is one long list. And I appreciate feedback like that in order to improve that. And one improvement to that, besides possibly putting it up by states or by regions, is Rob Perlman, who is the NSS online manager, and I think is on his way to KSC right now, is developing a nice interactive map to put on there. There'll be a map that if you want to click on Texas, zoom in, it'll show what chapters are in Texas. And if there's not a chapter in your town, you can find out what chapters are in your areas. And he's in the process of developing that. That's going to be online probably later this summer.
The general rule is that webpages should never be more than a few screenfuls. And it's often a very good idea that if you have a document that's made of several webpages, to have the entire document both downloadable as a zip to ASCII text file. So that if somebody wants everything, they can quickly grab the compressed file or can go through the individual webpages in the browse mode.
That's a good point. I also had people go compliment me, thanking the fact that it's in one file so they can just send it to the printer and print it out. Because a lot of people's like the hard copy version.
Two comments. I would like to commend Jeff Faust tremendously for keeping up the website, I mean, for the chapters list. He and I communicate regularly by email. I'm on the web a lot and occasionally I use searches to try and track down, find out if a chapter has put out a website and forgot to tell people about it. If that's the case, I find a new email address. I alert Jeff and Rod Perlman right away. I've also encouraged, and Jeff has done this, not to add graphics as much as possible, not to put, it's very easy for that type of information to be put into a table. Tables on the web is extremely slow. And Jeff has not done that. I commend him for that. I would like to take this opportunity to apologize, I'm half myself, since I have been web manager of the Chapters Assembly website, which you may have noticed has not been updated since November, primarily due to my conflicts with, due to HAL-5 and Project Halo. I've taken action to correct that. And at this time, I'd like to welcome any, any, any support, have any web experience or web. I want to make the Chapters Assembly website self-maintaining, if you would like. And that's been one of the challenges, is how do you incorporate automation, essentially an online bulletin board system? I want chapters to be able to freely download and upload information without having to just send me an email or send any one an email and create a bottleneck for the information. It'd be really nice if you had a forum, a membership forum, or a project that you've done, you have a report, to get that up there, have it there and ready for other chapters to access within five minutes. And it's probably, it's possible to do this, I just don't know how. If anyone has any experience on the website...
I would suggest an FTP site where you could upload, download the documents. Then you could just simply review them and put them in the right place on the website. That would probably be all you need. Maybe some guidelines as to what kind of documents you take.
This summer, we will have not only the full-time expertise of Rob Perlman, our web manager in the office while he's on summer break, we also have a handful of interns coming into the office, all of whom are much more web and internet and online literate than the normal staff, the year-long staff. And so presumably, we'll get a lot of work out of it in between the race for space and working on the Space Summit of ZOD and so forth. That's one of the things we're working on right now, is trying to put up some, a site that would be accessible by NSS members only and that would allow us a different level of participation. And as we come along with that, we'll obviously let you know more about what's happening. You might also be aware that on the web, we will be developing this next year's ISDC sites, the 1998 Milwaukee site and also the 1999 Houston site. And of course, the Board did not make a decision on the year 2000 ISDC at this meeting. That is still yet to come. The two competitors for the year 2000 ISDC are Rochester, New York, and Tucson, Arizona. As soon as we have a winner there, perhaps a candidate for 2001, we'll get some information up there. We'll also, of course, keep the 1997 site alive because the Metropolitan Space Society did such a great job. I think they're deserving continually to acknowledge their efforts. So our activities online, you know, perhaps if you don't know, we're up at about 300,000 hits per month now on our internet website. On the America Online Special Space Exploration Online page, we are at a position now where we're getting, Karen, is about 70,000 visits, they call it on AOL, visits among them. And these are fairly significant numbers for both. And keep in mind, the SEO of AOL, of course, is all volunteer. The staff puts very little time into that. That is your fellow members who are doing that for us. The vast majority of visitors to our website come off of AOL. So people going to our website come to it from America Online beginning. So we're very pleased by our association with the volunteers that are working that for us. Another question?
Yes, regarding on the, on the website, the AOL, how, what about memberships that have been received online?
Sure, we give memberships through AOL and also the website. It's hard for us to gauge exactly where they come from. We will be putting a line on there that says, you know, basically, where did you hear of us? What was your first connection with the National Space Society? We have changed the AOL Space Exploration Online site in some sense. The members that come on and come to the National Space Society, they're now actually link in through the web. So they no longer sign on to NSS through SEO. They do it actually by linking through the web. So they all come through the website. But unless we ask them specifically where they came, from where they came, we can't be sure. And presumably, we'll start to get some response from them.
One more add-on to that then. What you could do is add to the membership form online some indication that's actually on this site, like webpage site on AOL.com or rather AOL site, AOL on the form itself, so that it gets printed along with the top, if they're printed online.
When I was renewing my NSS membership back this winter, I checked the website to see if it was possible to do that there. And while there's a new membership page with forms you can fill out, there's no means for renewing a membership. So I had to go dig through my pile, find the old membership renewal letter, form letter that was sent to me, fill that out and snail mail it in. And if you could renew on the webpage, you wouldn't pay with the credit card and just fill in your NSS membership number in a box, that would be a help.
That's a good point, and that's possible. We haven't sent out directions to the webmaster to put that up yet, and we'll have to do that. Of course, you know, ordinarily, what we're trying to do is renew through the mail so we can find additional information. And we can, we can put that up on the website and put it up also on the mail that you get and say, oh, by the way, you can join online. You can renew online.
One thing on that, you have to secure your, at least part of your website if you're going to do that.
We have a secure web server.
If you have...
That section is secure.
Providing encryption.
That providing, it is totally encrypted.
And you have certificates that are required to enable encryption.
I don't know about certificates, but I'm told by our webmaster that it's...
Software may be there. You'll have to go through an additional process to turn on the encryption.
Well, you can sign up through the web via credit card. And I'm, I'm told that it is a secure service. I don't personally know about the certificate issue, so we'll ask about that. We've not had any problems of mine on it.
Yeah, referred over to updating the membership to the web.
You're going to save mail, mailing costs both directions. And the updated data is already entered into the computer. Does need to be re-entered in effect.
Well, that's right. If you're renewing, you don't need to re-enter anything. See, that's part of the situation with sending in the mail. When the mail house that gets back the renewal, they just look at a code. They don't re-key your entire name. They enter a code, you know, N, Y, Z, X, seven, and a bunch of numbers. And that pops up, your name and address. It says John Strickland. They check to make sure there's no changes. They see what amount of money you put in. They log that in. Off it goes, the next person. Online, we'd have to then print it out and send it to the mail house that does our renewals. Not that big of a problem. And if it's a convenience to the members, certainly we'd want to do it. The vast majority, and I mean 98% of the members, want to renew via mail. And that's just been an easier way for us. We get a higher percentage of renewals that way. I mean, keep in mind, folks, that's one of the things we need to do. Our renewal rate is about 71%. Our second-year renewal rate is about 26%. So we need to increase both of those. Ed, you've been a longtime member. Appreciate renewing every year. I want to make it as easy as possible to do that. So don't get me wrong. We'll take your suggestion in that. Other questions?
I wonder if we should open a debate at Astra and Inside Space on the shuttle flyback boosters. From what I see, from Dan Golden's recent comments and Mike Bridges' presentation, his next February, when President's budget comes out, is a multi-billion dollar program in this area. Massive budget is still going to be finite and something else is going to take a hit. And I suspect we will launch vehicles, and I think we should talk about it in the next few months and be prepared to take a strong position one way or the other next spring.
I'd like to respond to that since I'm involved in that project for Boeing. In fact, I'm doing flight mechanics analysis, seeing if we can actually land this thing. Let's give us time. Right now, we're not spending much money at all. Companies are spending their own money looking into this. And they've just, I think it's a million-dollar piece they just gave to Boeing and to Lockheed to examine this. So small money for a company that doesn't go very far. No one is going to pursue this until, there's two things they want to get out of. One is they're trying to improve the safety of the space shuttle system. Right now, you've got two large solid rockets and we don't think capable of. There's two alternatives, going liquid boosters, or three, really. You can do expendable liquid rocket boosters. That was looked at post-Talenta. You can do reusable liquid rocket boosters. Not necessarily flyback, just reusable. Part of possibly the propulsion system, parachutes back. Then there's the flyback option. Right now, NASA is having this focus on the flyback option. No one is going to pursue this unless it shows that the cost is comparable versus how much safety they want. If there's a tremendous improvement in safety and cost, then they'd like to expand that to improve the payload capacity of the space shuttle. They are, they're looking at this, and at this point, it's very much a technical and economic issue. And I, there won't be millions spent in the next three years. I mean, it's going to be a while before we get to that level.
Well, these places tend to gain a lot of momentum within NASA. I mean, clearly, there are forces within NASA who are strongly pushing this because maybe because they finally feel some hot breath on their necks.
No, not really. I mean, if you heard the...
They threw away $3 million on the advanced solid rocket motor.
That, well, this is true. And that is not going to go away. I mean, flyhalls aren't just going to lay down and say, okay, Boeing or Lockheed, go ahead and replace solid, our SRMs. They are going to propose probably a safer version.
We have to look at it in terms of our interest, which is development of the cheap material launch vehicle. It's going to impact funding.
I really don't think there's any worry there. Let me tell you why. Dan Golden and Laurie might address this if I get it wrong, would welcome that. Dan Golden has said very clearly, publicly, and I know he's said it privately within the agency as well, that the agency is getting out of the operations business. You heard that. And that, that means not just the day-to-day operations, but that means future investment in operational improvements as well. And specific to flyback boosters, which as you heard Roy, and he saw his charts, falls into the phase four portion of the Space Flight Operations contract where the USA is contracted to operationally perform missions of show. That's out there a ways. And Golden has said that he is going to, he intends to work toward a situation in which the investment for the development and deployment of those is done privately. I don't think NASA is going to spend anything like the kinds of money. More than a few millions of dollars off NASA money to do technology development that is then made available to plug into the development of the operational flight hardware. Laurie, did I basically get that right?
Yeah, I think you did. There isn't necessarily a reason for NSS not to have debate on it, since I think we are coming to some kind of a decision within the 99, 2000 timeframe about investing seriously in RLB or investing seriously in shuttle upgrades. We would love to say that either one of those or both could be handled by the private sector, and in an ideal world, that would be the case. I don't know many people who believe that the government will absolutely be able to get out of space transportation within the next two or three years. So, I mean, I do see pressure being put on Mr. Golden from part of the agency, but absolutely, Charlie's right. He remains steadfast. This is his goal. Of course, the question, how long do we even have Mr. Golden there? Hopefully, at least throughout this administration. But I think it's a valid point of discussion for NSS because RLB doesn't necessarily get you long-term Mars. I think as an overall policy consideration, is NSS really focused on commercializing LEO or are we going to be more like Wolf of Super Horns, which is Mars exploration in a serious way? And that, to me, is a big political issue and transportation plays a big... I mean, that, to me, is a big political issue, and transportation plays a big part.
David, I think part of the answer is in this policy consideration with our Policy Committee Chair Gordon Woodcock. Need to get with him. I know he believes very strongly in cats, and we welcome that. Let's take another question back here.
Apparently, NASA is not even considering pressure-fed liquid boosters for the shuttle, even though one were much safer than a flyback booster, wing-to-air booster, and much cheaper to do the research and development. It's another example of the airplane people's bias in favor of winged vehicles that land on runways.
Well, and again, I think it's something that, you know, can be made part of the discussions with the Policy Committee, and we encourage you to get involved with Gordon. We, if you contact us at Headquarters, if you have email, we can pass it back along to you and Gordon. You know, let's take some other questions, because there may be some things that are more focused towards NSS as an organization, and I'd like to, you know, get around to some of those. Let me ask if there's anyone else here in the audience. I see some the same hands up. I want to see if there's anyone else who is reticent to show on hand, but has a strong opinion or question that they'd like to present. Count meetings are frequently something that not everyone is familiar with. So, we have a question.
Well, I was wondering, why did you have me ask about rank of honor, about what happened at the board meeting? What, we had a gathering, or go with some kind of report, or somebody take minutes or post on the web or something? On the website, I think they ought to be.
Yeah, Mary Ann, our secretary, is right here perhaps.
I took the minutes on laptop, and they will be printed in Inside NSS. And I, in my chapter, they've said that we think, our chapter of members, a lot of them don't have email, and they feel somewhat disenfranchised, because they can't get on the website and download all this stuff that was just gotten through. So, we get Inside NSS, and that is our major way of finding out what's going on. And it's only $10 a year, and if we do it as a chapter, it's only $80 a year. So, I mean, it just barely covers the postage fee. And that's where you can find out the minutes of what's going on for board meetings, the election, the biologists, all the internal stuff that would not be of interest to the wider membership in Astra. That's publication where you can find that. It'll be probably in the next, it comes out monthly? It'll be coming out next month?
I think I already heard it, but if you're looking, I thought it was posted on the board there or something.
Right, well, it's only been in publication for about a year now, and the board is just getting around about it. So, can we, I'm sorry, I'm also on the Publications Committee, and that was an issue we addressed that people still aren't aware of Inside NSS. And we're going to have an article in Astra to tell people about Inside NSS and space news in some of our other publications, so that they'll know not just that they're available, but what they're all about.
And it's possible. You may have renewed quite a while ago and have a renewal coming up. In the renewal package, we talk about it, so that's another way we communicate the availability of Inside NSS. It's a monthly newsletter of information about our society. It's edited by Jeff Lewis, a board member of Jeff Lewis from Chicago. Jeffrey's not in the room right at the moment, but if you get a chance, give him a pat on the back for job well done, and a lot of time put into this.
Send your check to Headquarters. You don't need to look for Jeff. Jeff is, he's the editor, but people keep trying to give him the money. He said he'll forward it to Headquarters, but you can just, so you don't have to worry about the address, just send it to Headquarters, and he'll take care of it.
Other questions? Carol?
Just wanted to make a quick comment. I think you missed an opportunity. I've seen things to sign up for, all kinds of stuff here at the conference, but I didn't see one to sign up for Inside NSS. You had a nice display, giving some examples of it. It says, sign up for it, but there were no forums to sign up for it, and nobody here taking money that I could give my $10 to sign up for it. So I think you missed an opportunity, and I think next year, maybe you can correct that. And I have $10, but I don't have a forum.
May I call on the?
Is it Jeff Lewis?
I wanted to piggyback on that. You might want to consider putting on your membership forums. Do you also want Inside NSS to send us $10 more? Because some people are not in chapters, and nevertheless, might like to know what's going on. However, what I wanted to do first was to commend you for the campaign for the Future Membership Draft, which came in a nice, well-organized, almost everything you need box. I'd like to point out that because of chapter meeting schedules, you might have sent that the week before a meeting to one chapter and the month before a meeting to another chapter. And so, what's in your minds about how much time we have to work on it isn't necessarily correct. But nevertheless, it was a great first start, and I appreciate it. When will we know how well we did on that?
Well, since you asked, I have to answer. We did abysmally poorly. We got 60 new members out of that campaign, total. I'm not kidding. I sit here embarrassed before you all. And we're going to continue the campaign. There's no reason to shut it off now. I think we will discuss this a little further amongst ourselves and with chapter leaders. I believe our next target will be Labor Day. We'll give chapters the summer to try to regroup and kick the program off again. You would be an embarrassment to ask Buzz to go to the winning chapter, which was Dusty McGee's group in the Palm Beaches here in Florida. They brought in seven new members.
You got six alone.
Well, you were close. The point is, you know, those numbers are way too low. Obviously, our 2001 target was visionary. We need to work on this. We knew, and the campaign was developed with the idea that hey, it's a short timeframe. We came up with some things that we thought were some pretty good prizes, it could be once incentives that would get people involved. Worked hard to get Paul Fisher, Fisher Space Pen, to donate 50 copies of, or was it 100 copies, or $50 pen. We only got a couple people who were eligible for that prize. Getting Buzz to agree to, you know, travel to the winning chapter was not an insubstantial thing, but I cannot afford to send him someplace for seven new members. But having said that, we want to continue the campaign and try to get it so that it's in the triple figures for chapters to bring in new members. I'm confident this program can work. I know the members of the chapters and the society will do a good job on this. I think we just did not do enough advance late work on this this time to make it work.
Well, when did you take your count? Because I may not be the only one who turned some things in here. And you may find when you get back that there was stuff mailed that arrived after you left.
Well, that's true. That's obviously possible. But still, if your count is six, add it on with a few more, you can see where I'm getting at, that, you know, we're not, this is not working. We need to be getting, you know, a half a dozen new members per chapter member, so that your chapter overall, the space alliance square, would come up with, you know, 100 new members or something, and that's for an average chapter. These numbers aren't adding up. Recruitment campaigned by chapter members in other nonprofit advocacy kind of groups frequently get as high as 60% of their membership through their chapters. Anyone care to take a guess at how many new members our chapters recruit in regards to the total amount? I know Laurie Garber. Single digits, less than 2% of our members come through our chapters. We need to increase that significantly. And I know the chapters can and will do it if we provide some materials for them to do it, the training also. We're well aware that we need to do this, and I hope that at next year's conference, we'll have a much more robust program in that way. Carol, and then Brian.
Just on that same topic, I would like to say that I know that the Space Week International did not give anybody a lot of notice about when they were going to hold their March Space Week. But this campaign came out just after we did a big public event in connection with that Space Week International. And so, if we had known about that then, I think we could have done a little bit better job, because we had a big public event. Also, is NSS planning to do anything November, excuse me, July 20th? I heard or saw someplace that NSS was still planning to do something in relation to the timeframe of the All Space Week, which is, of course, the Apollo 11 flight timeframe. And because this may be, again, if we can get materials out and get the chapters organized, a lot of chapters in the past have done events in that timeframe, and this might be an opportunity to get a better result.
Okay, the question was about Space Week and basically what's in宿that's doing. Of course, we're doing the Fifth Annual Race for Space, which despite what you may have read in my column in the most recent Astra, is not 20 July 1997. Unfortunately, the National Park Service did us a disfavor. They promised us that date and then gave it away to the Christian Coalition, who's going to have a huge event on the moon. So we had to move the date to July 13th. Prayer works.
Woo!
Prayer and numbers words. And so, 13th July this year. So Headquarters will be focused on that, but certainly, we encourage chapters and activists to continue their efforts they have done in the past to commemorate, once again, landing on the moon by Buzz Aldrin in a nail armchair. We do not want to discourage chapters from participation in any space, week, space, day, space, minute events. We realize fully the confusion, and I, you know, I'm somewhat confounded by this also. You know, when we were approached by Space Week International, we strongly encouraged them that, yeah, hey, holding some sort of space commemoration during the school year makes a lot of sense. We've talked about this over the years many times, but I'm not so sure moving in from July was such a great idea, especially for our chapters who have built annual events around it. The Lockheed Martin sponsored Space Day, which was here earlier this week, you know, great idea, but I'm not sure that that has a lot of throwaway, that that's going to continue into the following years. As you're aware, the National Space Society is a founding member and continuing participant in the Mission Home Campaign, which is an effort by some of our friends in the aerospace community, aerospace industry, to work with those of us in the advocacy community to promote space to the public at large. And we have an embrace of space and take-up-space themes that are part of, you know, this Lockheed Martin Space Day and the Mission Home Campaign. It all becomes confusing to people. Hey, folks, if we could have Space Day 365 days a year, we'd participate in, wouldn't we?
Yes.
Absolutely. And I agree, you know, in some cases, it splits the pie up then, and, you know, maybe we ought to be focusing on one. I can't even begin to try to enforce such a thing. So we just have to take our opportunities when they come to us. Some other questions? Bryce, have a question.
Yeah, in regard to chapter relations, I'm an old timer in this organization, and our chapter predates the merger and such. And I think there's probably considerable resentment between chapters and the relationship with the board, basically. At the board meeting yesterday, there were two issues that came up directly affecting chapters. HAL 5 came up and asked for some money to help them with a project that has received accolades throughout this conference. And the Board of Directors turned around and took their figure for the money that they needed and turned it into a prize, or whoever can do the next job. But that doesn't help them for the investment that they need to make as a chapter, as small funds. Secondly, another proposal was raised to let members of NSS who renew through chapters renew at the student rate. And this would be a great benefit to chapters and would encourage them to renew members. And yet, that was fairly well dismissed by the board by the time everything was done. To simply give us a one-time bounty for recruiting new members isn't that much of a boon for us, and it doesn't encourage us to renew members and to continue them, and it doesn't encourage members to continue paying full dues. So, I'd really like to see a better relationship between NSS as an organization and its chapters structurally.
I'm just making a couple of observations here. NSS wouldn't exist without chapters and outreach and the things that you do. When we get together for a board meeting, it's kind of a squabble among the people who are around the center. And what really helps is to have prepared things before going in there and not to raise new issues. New issues just get kind of argued and debated and almost whoever finishes a lot of this. But it's really hard for me or anyone else to refer that sort of paper down, putting their handbook, whatever it is. But I would suggest that we really bring together concerned, well-thought-out plans that are somewhat coordinated amongst the chapters. And I'm sure that we'd be much more responsive if we could think out something, kind of react there, all of a sudden on the spur of the moment in a board meeting. It's not the best place to conduct those things.
Does that suggest that chapter persons have to get themselves together with some plans before the board meets?
Well, but there are regional chairs, and there are people who handle chapter organizations as a whole. And they're responsive really to all the chapters, and then they relate directly to the Headquarters Office with the Executive Director, and it reaches the Executive Committee. You know, there's a structure, and in many ways, it's overstructured, but we're not maybe using it, using the structure the way that we should.
It wouldn't apply if there was a false location of chapters which went into a board packing, or just to meetings, and it would be interesting about it.
Can I hear you?
Really, just after the act, you know, five minutes beforehand.
Well, we'll work on that in the Chapters Assembly Group.
But neither one of these proposals was brought up by the same Chapters Assembly, for example.
But we outlined on the agenda, and we kept looking for, when are we going to bring it up? And we weren't quite ready, but this could be all kind of prepared with white papers of whatever it is, and straight, honest answers. I assure you, we're going to be responding to them, because that's where the action is.
Thank you.
I think you should explain why we support RMB.
Should I do that?
Somebody needs to. We do support RAC, but it was a problem with the line of the law that people who just understand NASA.
We spent a lot of time going round and round about what would happen if HAL 5 dumped their ship in the middle of the schoolyard? And whether that would make NSS liable because we provided the funding that made it possible, and whether that could destroy the entire organization under a pile of lawsuits, and whether offering a prize would get around the liability issue. But when you get right down to it, the board is responsible for the National Space Society as a whole, for its continued existence, for its continued well-being, making sure that the lawyer-type bulkheads actually are lawyer tight and all that good stuff. And for a lot of things, you don't really have to go through the board. Is Craig Allison here at the moment?
No.
Okay, right. One thing that we can do without incurring liability for the National Space Society as a whole, and still supporting the HALO project, is to stick a hand in your own pocket and go.
These are 20s.
Is this an example?
Yes. Like that.
All right.
Somebody got a hat they can pass right now.
Somebody's got their ball cap, and I applaud heartily Bennett's fantastic generosity. It comes from heart, it comes from his desire to see the kind of courage and execution in the HAL 5 folks have gone through, and see that continued support it. I want to say that for those of us that are a little more financially challenged than Bennett obviously is, you can do a meager thing like join the chapter, like I did, and contribute a little on top of the chapter fee as well.
Any other questions?
Regarding anniversaries and Space Day celebrations, we have an important anniversary coming up this fall that could use a little, at least a little bit of local media attention from chapters, and that's Buttnick's 40th anniversary.
Ooh. There's a number of activities that would be taking place in regards to that. We have not We have not locked into that. We have a program involving the Space Summit once again, the lunar Mars debate. We can only take on so much. There are some respected organizations that are doing some Sputnik anniversary events. I think the next anniversary that we'll get involved in, and I've already spoken with Jack Schmidt and Gene Cernan to commemorate the Apollo 17, last steps on the moon, we're planning on having a dinner event in the Washington area. And I know, here we're putting on another event in Washington, but believe me, this is, you know, it's a good place to do it, because if a lot of members are coming, so I think we can get out to attend this sort of thing. Certainly, there will be other commemoratives around the nation to commemorate that Apollo 17, last steps on the moon. And we'll try to work with you on the kind of language, the kind of outreach opportunities that may come available to us to take advantage of those in the coming months, so that by late autumn, you know, early winter, what Apollo 17 was December, first week or so in December, so that's when we're looking at doing an event. That might be our next opportunity. I don't want to brush off the Sputnik 40th anniversary, I mean, it's a big one, but folks, we can only do so much. If you can do things at the local level, great, at the national level, you pick it to.
Remind people that this, the anniversary exists.
We will be in July 4th, Mars Pathfinder. Sure, we're going to be, we've been trying to work at getting a space at Planet Fest, which is the Planetary Society's event. We're also working on an opportunity with the National Symphony Orchestra and the celebration that is done every year on the Capitol grounds to try to put up some images that might have already been received from Pathfinder on Planet Mars during the annual July 4th celebration and the musical show that they do on PBS, as usually appears on PBS. We'll see. Unfortunately, I think some of the images come down just at about real time, you know, as the band is playing, or the orchestra is playing, the images are coming in, and we may not be able to do that. We'll see what we can do. Other questions around the room, especially perhaps in the back?
Something I would encourage you to do is people who join the National Space Society that's outside of a chapter, maybe pass their name on to the local chapters and encourage, if not require them, to contact these people. I've been a member a couple of years, have not talked to anybody in our local chapter, I'm going to pursue them, but I think it would be helpful if they were pursuing the other new members that are joining.
Sure, of course, we can't require chapters to do anything, although you do have to send in your paperwork. We do provide a list of members, two chapters, as part of the campaign for recruitment that we're doing. We provide a list of expired members, try to get them back. Of course, we figured, hey, this is a no-brainer. These are people who were once members and for whatever reason opted not to renew. Let's try to get some of those people back. Again, you're only going to get a percentage of them, but we work at the percentages. You know, if we can increase the numbers of people that we can give back, we'd have a larger society. Your point is well-taken. Chapters who are represented here, if you haven't requested the list recently, please do so. We will begin this summer sending out the list to chapters without being asked. This is something that we can just go ahead and do. Now, the problem is, we'll probably get the format wrong. You know, some chapters want it electronically, others will want it in paper. We'll try to contact the chapters in advance and say, Carol, how would you like your list? You know, going to other chapters around and trying to figure that out. Pat, any questions?
I have several, but I'll do just one right this minute, in light of what was just being discussed, is that there is always advantage to having a member stay a member than to become expired and then try to get them back. So number one is the club should be in touch, the local chapter should be in touch, but the thing is that NSS, instead of giving the list of the expired members, should give a list of the members whose time for renewal is coming up, and then, you know, so the club can contact those people, and if they haven't before, and say, hi, you rather do anything locally, and of course you want to renew, don't you? Or whatever.
That's actually a very good point. We sent out as many as six notices to members that they're coming up for renewal. And perhaps what we can do is we get around to about the fourth or fifth notice, if we find that, we can send it then to chapters and say, hey, these people are, they're resident, they're not coming back to us, please contact them and beg them to rejoin. Because that's, you're absolutely right about that. The cost of acquiring a new member is very high, and to lose them, when we only have 71% renewal rate, we need to increase that to much higher. You're never going to get 100%. You know, some people just, you know, whim, join an organization, have no intention of ever signing up again. But if we work on that, we may be able to go along for. Bill, and then over here.
David, one way to get members is provide value, receive value. Okay, at the moment, when someone goes into the Space Society, to some degree, it's a contribution to a call, and you get some sort of value out of that. But look at the models Smithsonian and other interest groups, you might start looking at discounts, any number of space museums, any number of trips. There are a lot of ways that you can add, receive value, they don't cost anything, but they accept the time, energy of the staff, and saying, we have this audience here, we can deliver to you if you'll make it worth their while. And the other thing is, a site in Washington, or a site somewhere that's a National Space Society site, where it's always open, where we could display the awards, the history of NSS, that people could visit on a regular basis, that it didn't have to be manned, just some place, trophy case, et cetera.
Our office is always open, 24 hours a day.
Yes, but it's not.
I'll walk down the block and come over. Lori knows, she can usually read me at about 11 o'clock at night at the office.
And if you had directions on how to find a way to the Hill, which set up, you know, this is how you get your congressman, or here's come to Washington, this is where we'd like to go, carry this petition, it might not take so much time, but likely all.
Good point, Bill. We've tried to develop a relationship with the Smithsonian Air and Space Museum, and of course, that's somewhat difficult, it's a quasi-governmental organization, they have, you know, various rules and regulations and so forth. As you may be aware, they are now taking donations at Air and Space, as well as some of the other national museums, which of course, don't charge an entrance fee, but have blocks there for donations or contributions, if you'd like. They have not been open to that idea. Perhaps we can talk to NASA about that. Lori just nods.
I just wanted to kind of say, I don't know whether you've talked about this before, but last year, I kind of let my membership lapse, just like you're talking about, and then I got a discount offer. I couldn't refuse, so. But if you want to hook me, the easiest way to hook me is to just offer me a 10-year membership. Because I can't stand having to renew magazine subscriptions, membership subscription, every year, and then all those infernal mailings that keep coming, and you've got to sort out the ones that are worth reading, the ones that aren't worth reading. That's all I have to say.
Jim, I'll offer you one. I think what we've, what we've learned over the years is that if you give lifetime memberships, you don't get your money back. The society doesn't.
I didn't say lifetime.
Well.
How about three years?
Well, the problem is, then you don't pay attention to the appeals that we send out. Now, let's face it, that's where we really may not have money. But Jim, I'll offer you a 10-year. You got it?
You can.
Multi-year membership box on the forums, that's done. A gentleman in blue here.
Yeah, if you're discussing, like you said, possible discounts for space organizations or whatever, a good group to either model yourself after or talk to is the Florida Hotel Industry Association, because they have, they work throughout the state of Florida, they offer, for I think $30 a year, discounts on all sorts of different things, so I think that that's an organization that would be worth looking into if you're going to use that incentive.
Well, it's a good point. You know, Buzz talks about this often, there already is a space tourism industry. It happens to be earth-based, but there are an awful lot of people who go to the Air and Space Museum in Washington, about 10 million visitors a year to Florida Spaceport out here, you know, Alabama, Texas, you name it. Hutchison, Kansas, has one of the best space museums in the world. It's a long way off of the nearest highway. Someday, of course, there'll be a spaceport next to it, people will be able to come from Japan, wherever else they want to. The point is, there's an industry already going. The point that Bill and you made are very valid, we need to start talking to these folks. One of the things we're doing this year, this summer, and perhaps Karen Rugg, our Director of Communications and Marketing, could address this, we have this cruise that we're doing, a Total Eclipse of the Sun Cruise, and we already have 15 or so cabins sold, and I believe Karen can comment on this, but we're currently ahead of the Planetary Society, and we hope to remain there. Yes. We're going to have loads of them, Charlie said. Karen, would you like to talk about that? That's our reference in space tourism.
Well, that's just really, you know, just really briefly, it's one of our first forays into, you know, value-added membership benefits, and something that's not taken us a lot of time to do, which is a real consideration. We're joining with a couple of other museums, and actually, last night, the St. James Science Center's with a team with us now, and help us to get, for every person who gets signed up to NSS, the organization gets a donation, which is also great as well, from the touring group, doing all of the actual logistics. So I just encourage you to, it's been encouraging, we weren't sure if people would go for it, but we're getting just a lot of nice comments, you know, gee, it's great, Frankie's really good, and Buzz is going to be on the trip, another chance to bug him. So, you know, there's information on the website, there's an ad in AdAstro, if you haven't, you know, gotten more information on it. There was also a brochure, a registration packet, if you haven't taken it, close to the location, purchase it, do so, and join on it, we think it's going to be a really great opportunity, and of course, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for most of us. So we'll be hoping to be able to do more of those kinds of things.
If I could just have a follow-up word about that. I was on the NSS-sponsored tour to the Russian space launch facilities. There were a grand total of 11. I don't hardly need to take off my shoes to count how many of us there were on that tour. And it's a rotten shame, because everybody on that tour said that it was one of the best vacations they'd had in their life, they completely saw a launch off of Gagarin's pad to Mir, a Progress supply launch, and we were 1.5 kilometers away from that.
What's our video?
How's your hearing?
Not that bad. Actually, my hearing is going a little bit, but that's because of airplanes, not because of rockets. Point is, I would encourage you folks to revisit that and maybe try that again. I don't know what went wrong the first time, but the people who missed it really missed it.
Good point, Cliff. We've done this before, we did have a fair amount of success with that. I think the problem now with touring in Russia is we have to provide a bodyguard for every person, and that becomes somewhat cost-effective, but having said that, I'll send you your envelope later for your testimony on behalf of our tourists going back out there.
What's happening with the credit card situation? Is that producing anything, or will it?
The National Space Society has an affinity credit card program through Mastercard, through MBNA Amerindor, which is the bank that offers the credit card. We receive royalties for that. I received a check recently for it, it was about $700 for royalties off the credit card. It's not an insubstantial amount that we get per year, I don't have financial figures in front of me, but it's several thousand dollars. It's an easy program for us to do. Basically, they just mail out mailers, to our direct mailers, to our members, the crews end up signing up, and then of course, they work on renewing those people. We get about, I believe it's 1% royalty payment to the society. If we could encourage our members to do that more strongly, you know, I should take that upon ourselves, and perhaps put advertisements and ad asterons and so forth in support of that, because it is a potential.
Credit cards may as well have this one.
Right. And of course, you can consolidate all your credit cards into that and just use that. It's not a bad idea. Carol and then a gentleman here.
I just wanted to say that I think that the chapters can really take advantage of opportunities like the July 4th landing. Almost every science museum and planetarium is going to have a special program there, and if you just call the directors of those, a lot of times, the NSS chapter with very little of their effort can have an event and be out in the public and be associated with a memorable event like that, and it is a good opportunity to get our message out to the public.
Very. Sir? A quickie comment about the mailer renewal notices, or renewal notices, things like that. I'm not sure what you could do to separate, to make it look a little different from the rest of the junk mail that you get, but one of the things that my wife just mentioned about another organization she's in, is that they say something like, right on the envelope or again, very prominently, this is the first of four mailers you will receive, or something like that. So it's very obvious that you can't just ignore the fourth of four, for example. You know, it's just some, just some little ways to make you, make your mailer a little more important than the Friends of Animal Rights and the, you know, whatever else you get, whatever else you get, Laura.
Craig, it's a good point. I think what we've found is, we're, of course, working with a professional consultant who does this for us. He's done this for Air and Space Smithsonian, he's done it for NWAACP, a number of other professional and advocacy groups. You know, I trust his judgment on this sort of thing, but of course, I'll bring the feedback to him. Our members may be different than some of these other organizations, and respond in different ways. And over the years, he's done a very good job of this, and so I don't like to second-guess him, but I'll take your thoughts to him and see what we can do about that. Other questions, or just general comments?
Yeah, the way the conferences are being handled, there are some problems, and I know that you all have been working on that, and it looks like we're in the middle of a major shift, and yet nothing's been said here. And yet, you talk about being inside NSS, and it seems to me that we should see that the town meeting is a time to summarize whatever's going to be inside NSS this later on, whether in the middle of the conference or at the end of the conference, this is the time to summarize what's been going on here. And then, one other aspect in terms of logistics of something, is that I have attended some committee meetings, which turns out to have been completely board meetings, and I was not allowed to speak. Absolutely absurd, the one time of the year when we have a chance to really interact and refused, you know, and you feel rebuffed. Here's the one chance to have a chance to do something and be involved, and you're sorry not interested. As it turns out, I was able to get around these things in the long run, but that was because I was persistent. But they should be where the activities are involving the members, and then when we come to this thing here, especially this year with all the things that are going on, any year really, is that there should be a report on what's been going on, and then a chance for these people as a whole, who were not able to be on the committee meetings for whatever reason, to give their reactions to what's going on.
I'll let a board member respond back.
Well, you're right, Pat. And I sometimes have thought that we should be able to be more interactive with the membership in board meetings, why frankly, I hadn't thought of the committee meetings, but that seems even more obvious. So, I'm agreeing with you, and now let me say that a problem, a couple of problems in that regard that I see that we've got to resolve at the committee and the board level are, number one, the board has not been as willing to prepare itself for the business at its one and only meeting each year at the ISDCs. The board members, to a majority, I would be so bold as to say, do not really come prepared to expedite the business of the day, and therefore, we end up talking about minutia, we end up allowing a variety of new business to interfere with other ongoing, which should include interactions with the members who would like to sit and participate in a board meeting. I challenged, with probably some words that were rather heated, the board yesterday on that very point. We have to take some action in that regard, and I know Buzz agrees with me, we just need to grapple with it and execute some discipline in that regard. And I think that would then allow for an opening in time during the one board day that we have for interaction, as you wish to have it, you referred to. Now, at the committee level, we need then to, at another... Now, at the committee level, we need then to, another problem that showed itself very clearly at this meeting was that at this ISDC, that while there were plenty of opportunities made available for committee meetings to be held, there were very few individuals who decided to participate in their own committee's meetings, that as members of the committee, much less members of the organization, who wished to sit in on those committee meetings. So we have got to work as the officers of the organization to, among ourselves, get a lot more discipline in doing the business which we volunteered for as officers of the organization, and as members of the board, you've elected to the board, as members of committees, which we volunteer for. We've got to be a lot more disciplined in that regard. Once we achieve some significant discipline in that regard, then we open up the opportunity not only to more efficiently do the organization's business, but to allow you, the acting members, to participate during those times when we're meeting at ISDCs. So may I help, we have maximum help, but we've got some significant work to do in that regard, Pat. And I don't know anybody on the board that disagrees, or any of the officers disagrees with your point, we just, as a group, have not heard you, the customer, and acted on it that well just yet.
Relation, or... We went through this several years ago.
One quickie suggestion, and using a couple of other organizations that belong to, is that having one little section of the meeting be sort of an open-mic type of session, where, you know, comments from, you know, the unwashed masses or whatever, whatever you want to call it, just have essentially a general comment, you know, if anybody wants to bring something up, that sort of thing.
Yeah. Excellent, excellent point, that's the obvious direction that we need to be working for.
Yeah. We went through this several years ago, but it seems like we again have a growing attendance problem at board meetings.
Right. We always have a growing problem, and we always have a continuing problem. It is a problem, and that's something that I have harped on, probably obviously not harped enough, or at least I haven't yielded a firm enough hammer, and I'm not the chairman of the board. Buzz, he's not here, so I can criticize him. We all need, and the criticism is only one of the, we all just need to do better. He's the chairman of the board, so we all got that. You know, he should get on the board members to, by God, be there, or resign their position, or not run next time. And that's the way it is. So you're absolutely right, we have to do a lot better, and so, hey, you're acting, you're aggravating the board members about that. You know any of the board members that, those that show up, kind of letting them aggravate others that didn't show up? You yourselves know some that didn't show up? Get on their behinds.
Right. Yeah.
I'd like to recommend that the nominating committee, instead of looking for board members with stature, look for board members who know how to run a business.
Or board members with money. Peeps of money.
Well, really important is somebody who knows how to run business, who can make money, or, you know, cut costs and that sort of thing, but we'll do their homework, and we'll come prepared, know how to deal with it.
There's a handage in the association management industry, and I can talk about this as a board member, and speak to it from a different viewpoint, but you want board members who bring two of the following three things: wisdom, work, meaning they do a lot of work, and wealth, or bucks, brawn, brains. You want them to bring two of these three things. I think, you know, the National Space Society members should be aware that we have a number of members who do not bring two of those three things to the board. In fact, in some cases, they don't even bring a single one, because they don't show up. If they don't show up, they clearly can't be bringing their brains or their brawn. And, you know, while we have a small, but thankfully, growing group of board members who do contribute financially to our, to our society, we need to get them to do that not only directly through donations out of their own pocket, but to connect us, as you said, to other people who can give us larger sums of money. If we want to continue our efforts and expand them and do a lot of the things that some of the board members bring to the meeting and suggest that we do, we need to come up with the money for it.
As part of the bylaws of another organization named the NSS, the National Speliological Society, I believe that part of their bylaws is a requirement that board members make as minimum number of meetings, or be required to resign from the board.
Which would be something, it would be, our board would have to pass it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, there's an impediment there.
But he's making a very good point, is that the forum, it's the people who are here, and so the people who are not here have already voted for them to be eliminated. Okay? And also, is a fact, is that from what I've seen of that board, I don't see how anything gets done, it's so big, physically big, that you can't hear each other from across the room, I can't imagine. And also, in terms of wielding it, it's way too big to be effective.
Pat's comment is about the size, really, to its effectiveness in the board. I have argued for some time that we need to have a smaller board. My argument has, well, it's obviously not been listened to, and not been carried in that regard, but I've also been a little bit moderated a little bit in that point, Pat, and that's because I've begun to look around and see some other organizations that appear to be extremely effective, that have boards even larger than ours.
National Rifle Association has a board of 177 members. I'm not sure that size is the problem.
It's a contributor, I mean, certainly, if you don't have other attributes, like extremely dedicated individuals, then it just, the size just tends to extend and augment the difficulties you've otherwise already got. There's a number of problems, potential and real problems with the circumstance, Pat.
And my just complete thought is that who should be on the board? And the three, you know, characteristics that, you know, you have to have two of the three. If they have wealth and not the work ability and so on, then they should be on the Board of Advisors or something. If they have the ability to work, whether or not they have wealth, they should be on the regular board, and if they don't show up, then they're not doing the work, and therefore, they shouldn't be involved. Because the thing is that if we just start talking all the time, we're not getting anything accomplished, we need to get things accomplished. And we have to have a board being in charge of getting things done, we have to have a direction. If the board isn't there, we can't have the proper direction. Or if they're there and has too many of them, so you can't hear each other, you know, you're not effective in being a board. So, there's gotta be some way to cut things down.
Claire, just a second, I'll go back to this.
I'm an engineer, and I've been involved in operations several nonprofits, and this is, this general discussion never goes away, never ends. The issue is board development, one of them, an organization, and they're image-related. You can structure it in a couple of different ways, you can have powerful influential people that maybe aren't documented, but want to name something in one, in one structure, you can have representative assembly in another structure, which is part of the strength of this organization, is grassroots input, and I urge everyone never, ever to retreat from that, because it should be cutting off resource creativity and connection to the community as a whole, if you did that. On the other hand, part of the reason why people don't show up at board meetings is they don't do anything, there's nothing important to be done. Addressing what the society can do that nobody else can do, and what value it would be for people to participate, is probably a great challenge, and I urge us to address that. There's got to be a number of ways, you know, we can be the first, get discount tickets, or, there's a lot of things that can be done, but if there's some focus we can put on for what would be essential to this society, that would separate us from anybody else's, some value that would come to anyone who was a member, then growth might take off. And that would address the board problem too, is that people need to feel like they're gonna do something that's gonna matter, and they show up.
Yeah, pointing's effective, good. I recognize it from your standpoint of having seen it in many other places than just here, I mean, it's, yes, those points are rational and real and need to be addressed. Claire?
The first time I was asked to run for the board representing Region 3, I said no, because I didn't think I could get to those meetings. And when I did run, I assumed, just implicitly, that I was making a pledge to show up for two board meetings, and was kind of startled when I was told that it would also be helpful if you'd come to the executive committee meeting, and I discovered it was, I was glad I did. I haven't run again, partly because I can't make that pledge again, but even though it might take a vote of the whole board to make a bylaw change, the nominating committee could request that the people that it nominates make a written pledge as part of their campaign statement to show up at board meetings. It's an action you could take, I don't, maybe, I suggest.
And there's other things to, I accept your point, and it'll be considered, but I also, I think that, well, not I think, but it's very clear that if the active membership, which of course, quotes for board members, is informed as to the past history of current running board members in that very regard, how many meetings they have attended, et cetera, then that might stimulate certain action as well. And so, if in the election rules, we have stipulation that when candidates' statements and names are put forward in the, on the ballot, that it is noted how many meetings that they have attended out of previous meetings held. Michael's in the signing down here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get one person's attention, I got like a whole twelve of them responding.
You got the leadership's attention up there, are you?
Okay, other questions? We've got about 11 minutes to go, so.
All right. Ten, nine, eight. All right, all right, yeah.
You publish the minutes of the board meetings inside NSS?
Yes, yes.
Minutes of this board meeting will be published by our secretary, Mary Ann Dyson, in an upcoming issue of Inside NSS.
One thing on that is, again, what I said a few minutes ago, is if there was a board report here now, then we could ask questions and say, well, gee, this work's fine, but how about this, and what can we do to help, and so on. Whereas if it was pretty just in NSS, then people say, oh, well, this, or, oh, I wish I'd had a chance to say that, and there's no really effective way to say anything when we're no longer together.
Well, that's true. You know, Pat, it's a measure of volunteers doing the work, you know.
No, all I'm just saying is, you know, one of you...
No, it's a measure of volunteers doing the work, you know, Mary Ann's a volunteer.
No, 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 no.
She doesn't have the minutes together yet, so therefore, you're not gonna give them the minutes.
I'm not saying that, so and forth, go to such and such a way. I'm saying, the major things discussed were...
I'm really starting.
A ton of what happened. A ton of the topics discussed.
Well, that was the point of this meeting, though, I, you know...
We hadn't heard anything, so you...
I started out that way.
I guess we didn't...
The first question was on that very point, Pat, and we started down that path, and we have given some essence points to the board discussion. I mean, there's a couple more things that I can put out right now, that to add to that list.
Well, the board discussed the financial condition of the society, and agreed that we need to do some more fundraising. The board decided to re-up my contract for a year. Thank you. Wait, I didn't tell you about it. I did. We discussed, thank you, we discussed, what else did we discuss? Charlie, I'm gonna leave it to you.
Well, I'll mention the fact that the proposal for a national radio program was brought up, that we're studying that, that, and with, the board had a general sense of wanting to find a way to pursue that. The struggle here is always, and this is one thing that I think the board is beginning to be more responsible at, and I'm certainly pushing very hard for it, is that we be responsible in a budgetary manner. In other words, there have been plenty of opportunities on a contingent basis in which the board meets, or the executive committee meets, and we discuss the budget, we discuss how tight the budget is, and it's always tight, because when you want to get into space, there's always any number of things that you need to do, but you never have enough money to do. Anyway, we're always very tight in that regard, and yet, new proposals come up at the spur of the moment in that meeting, and it's the obligation of those around the table to at least hear that out, and they're usually all great ideas, but what do you say about that? And what we've usually said in the past is, okay, we really like that so much, so David, you go off and figure out a way to do that, and oh, by the way, do it within the existing budget. Well, something has got to fall off the table, I mean, it's not, so, we've thrown that challenge inappropriately to the staff and to the executive director, the board has not always, probably not even the majority of the time, taken its own responsibility to say, okay, if we think that should be done, then we need to find a way to fund it. If not, if not to vote here and now on something that falls off the end of the table from the existing budget to allow that to happen this year, this budgeted year, then we come up with a mechanism, or the individual who brings the idea forward, which I contend is the, is the starting point of this, an idea comes up in the middle of the year, the middle of the budget year, for a new project, then the individual who brings it forward should also bring up, or a proposal as to how to make it happen, not only organizationally and structurally, but in terms of funding as well, if it requires funding. So anyway, that, we talked about that to a significant degree yesterday at the board meeting. We talked about something that one of our, one of our more giving volunteers, giving in terms of personal time and professional time, George Smith, a member and attorney from New York City, reviewed for us a, over the past several months, a circumstance, a legal situation, in which the IRS has had available to 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations the opportunity to make what, elect what is called a 501h status, which in very, very brief form, because I don't remember all the details that George, for instance, put in a 17-page analysis of the situation, of the circumstance and the option. It's an election in which is now currently allowed, and has been for the last 10 years by the law IRS code, allowed for a not-for-profit organization such as ours for educational purposes to, if they elect this option, we can do some degree of lobbying within a specific ceiling. It's no longer questionable as to what that amount of your annual budget can be or should be allocated to, or your resources should be allocated to the purpose of lobbying. You now can do that by signing up this option to this and this level, but you have to keep separate books in order to provide and to prove that, which is only rational. Well, anyway, the board heard this yesterday, and the board did move to enable ourselves to have that option. So the National Space Society is going to sign up for that option. Now, this does not mean that we're gonna go off and lobby any differently than we have before. We will have options, however, though, as to how we can do a better job for ourselves, the direction we're pursuing for ourselves and humanity, or the membership and the cause. It is just an option, but we're, a greater option that we're going to enable ourselves to be able to work with them as we see fit. So, that was one thing, the ISDCs, David's already talked about that, we spent a good deal of time talking about the ISDCs, especially the 2000 ISDC proposals that are in place. The result in that particular case was that, per the recommendation of the conference committee, the recommendation being that they couldn't recommend at this point, at this meeting, a particular option, that is Rochester, New York, over Tucson, Arizona, at this point in time, because there wasn't enough specific information, enough specifics in the way of program, or hotel commitments, et cetera, et cetera, for us to be able to make a cogent decision, that they as a cogent recommendation as a committee of the board, nor the board after discussing it felt that they saw enough there either to make a decision based upon the presentations, they were good presentations, short but good, but again, they were short because there was information already available for it to review, the board has the responsibility to do that, help the meeting inform. We didn't decide, we put off the decision for at least six months or so, contingent upon more information, and what's essentially the request for a rebid with more information and more solid information and commitments on the part of those two locations, and other locations, if other locations want to now build up a bid and put it in strongly for 2000. So, anyway, 2000, the decision has not been made as to where... So anyway, 2000, the decision has not been made as to where that ISDC will be held yet. As David talked about earlier, we talked about the summit. We talked about how we want to execute that in the fall, what we want to do with it. We talked about, had integrated a proposal for some Washington activist activity in the same timeframe. We talked about the policy committee. I talked about the points the policy committee covered this morning, its new chairman, Gordon Woodcock, his intent to not radically change or recommend change in our policy positions. He wants to get familiar, as the chairman of policy committee, with our current and near-term positions, review those, put those positions into a more reasonable form, actually three forms, a very short abstracted form, that you as activist members, that the chapters can, for instance, just for instance, have in front of you to either memorize or take to a mall, or to an airshow, or to a, to a school, to a committee presentation meeting, and say, this is what we believe in, this is what we want you, the public, to see as the future, you know, please join us, please vote for this, or tell your elected representatives. You give them all the possible options and the ways to utilize this, including, of course, joining the chapter, joining the National Space Society. And then below that, another form of that policy, whatever that may be, our position on Mars, our position on the moon, our position on cheap access to space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There will be a longer, there'll be a one-page summary of the policy position. And then there will be, in addition to all that, there'll be the multitudes of paper which we can all generate, given the amount of time that we like to study these things. There'll be the background for any of us, or all of us, who want to access that background to go into the details in terms of what, what human activity, either by instruments or direct human exploration on Mars should be like, in our opinion, and certainly where that's going, and why, the settlements of Mars, open space settlements, and the separate matter, all the details, referencing everything from Zelensky through O'Neill to today. So all of that will be in a separate form as well, and Gordon intends to see that done. And I probably left off a few cat and dog things. We talked about, we got status, as David just gave, in terms of the National Space Society's mission, home participation, in terms of the embrace space activities and space day activities. We had a discussion, a short discussion, on the very point that David just brought up and reflected from the board meeting, which is, well, we've got a conundrum here nationally now. We've got to embrace space at the end of May, or space day, the end of May, ostensibly around the anniversary of the Kennedy announcement, the decision to go to the moon in '61. We've got Space Week, traditional Space Week, let me put it that way, around the anniversary of the first manned lunar landing, and the anniversary of the Viking I landing on Mars. That's a traditional week that we, as the National Space Society, our chapters, our membership, and co-sponsoring organizations pursue diligently public presentation of our positions and recognition of the history, the heritage, and the prospects of the future. But then there's the new Space Week. The Space Week International Organization has, this year, announced that a week in March will be called Space Week from this point on. And so, anyway, we talked about that. No direct conclusion, except that we should work to try to get these things together so board members and the national officer take action in that regard. So that, in very, very short form, Pat, I think that's probably the high points. Florence, don't forget that you follow up here to help the national staff.
Was something mentioned about tourism?
There was, there was some conversation about tourism. I don't think we took any, it's, of course, a policy, it's a position upon which the organization has a position, so it does show up very strongly in our policy deliberations. Michael, standing over his head, gave a.
I hope this audience is willing to give you a vote of thanks for all the hard work that you and the board have invested, and the staff has invested.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Appreciate your time here for the entire conference, and being part of it, that you were able to spend and serve it for this morning. And I now know that we're probably over time in the closing ceremony for this conference. And now to the conference chair, Michael Gilbrook, and our thanks again from the board, from the officers, from the national headquarters office, and I'm proud of the membership for your great and very giving participant, organization at this year's meeting.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Before I make the final closing remarks for this year's National Space Society 16th International Space Development Conference, a few words from our operations director.
Thanks, Michael. I just wanted to take a couple minutes to thank the management staff and all of our volunteers. They really did a good job of helping support me in the times I needed support. And the volunteers who diligently worked the last four days were just outstanding. And I'd like to personally get a replay of that hand, and they're sitting right against the wall. Hopefully, we're at the conference. We really tried to get a diverse speaker arrangement made for you. We had some tours, we even had the mouse. And as we're standing here, getting ready to close this conference, I hope my son, graduates from high school, were on the moon. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. You know, it's kind of gratifying to see that there's still, I haven't actually made a count, but I'd estimate there's probably at least 50 or 60 people still in this room. That's pretty good for an ISDC at 12 o'clock on Monday afternoon. I think maybe that's an indication we've done something right. I just mentioned the Charlie chew. Sounds like we could have gone on with the town hall meeting here for a couple hours, and he and David said, oh, no, we're done, sorry. But it's good to see the enthusiasm, because this is what we need, is we need people who are involved, truly activist people who are involved, because unless we're involved, our vision is not going to happen. It's not going to happen for us. Our elected officials, the people in industry, they need to know that we want government to spend the money to do the basic research and development. The industry needs to know that we're willing to buy the services. They need to hear from us, because if they don't hear from us, most energized, most interested, most well-informed members of the public on these issues, the other folks are never going to learn what they're missing out, because it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. And I want you to take note that today, you heard a member of the United States Congress say, and I think the first time I've ever heard a congressman say, we ought to put solar power systems in space. I think. It's not going to be more than about 24 hours before I'm following up with a letter on that one, let me assure you. I'd just like to close by saying, we opened this ceremony, we opened this conference with the procession of the flags since the space-faring nations. We count nine. Maybe there's a couple more. Maybe these aren't all good ones. It's not much more than this now. I'm looking forward to more and more flags being added to this list as we become a truly space-faring planet. Hopefully someday, all of us can stand under these banners on the moon and on Mars, and I look forward to your assistance in helping us get there. Thank you very much, and have a good time.